Good morning, everyone. Call this meeting of the Alabama Community College Board of Trustees to order. We extend a welcome to everyone that is viewing us online by Zoom or other method, and we appreciate your interest in the work of this board, the work of the system. All of this has come together because of the leadership of Chancellor Baker and his staff, the leadership of our presidents throughout the state of Alabama and their staffs and faculty working hard. And so these projects are presented to us with a lot of work behind them and a lot of thought behind them, and we appreciate you following the work of this system. At this time, we're very pleased to have Pastor Gary, Dr. Gary Blair with us to give our invocation today. And at this time, Dr. Blair, I recognize you, sir.
Thank you. Well, I have a scripture for us today, and that's Psalms 116, first couple of verses says, "I love the Lord because he heard me, my voice and my supplications, because he has inclined his ear to me; therefore I will call upon him as long as I live." You know, the fact is that each one of us need help from the Lord, and this is a great opportunity for us to call out to the Lord and ask for his help, especially during this COVID season that we've endured over the last several months. And so let's pray together. Lord, right now, I pray for this board as they meet together. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and guidance as they consider and work with the students that they have that are virtual or if they're meeting together, Lord, I pray that you'll protect them, watch over them, as well as the staff, Lord. We ask for your help, your leadership and your guidance, wisdom from above that will help the decisions that are made today during this board meeting. I pray for your blessings and your guidance on each individual that's a part of this meeting today. I pray that you'll be with each one in a mighty way, and we ask this in your name. Amen.
Dr. Blair, thank you again for being with us, and we appreciate so much what you and your staff are doing under these trying conditions of COVID and the work of all the pastors in our state. But thank you again for being here. At this time, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three is roll call. Ms. Wilkins, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Al Thompson.
Present.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods.
Present.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Present.
Milton Davis.
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally. You have four.
Thank you. Item four is approval of the agenda. At this time, we'll consider the agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, let me, if it's okay, I'd like to-
Yes, sir. Yes, Chancellor.
There's been considerable discussion about the item A1. And what I would like to say is, because the funding from this office that goes to this project is very restrictive funded, can only be spent for certain things. I have not done the detailed review of that whole project. I must do that before we can go forward. I don't want to delay the project unnecessarily, and I don't think we have to. But if you move forward on this item, I want you to understand there's going to have to be a second internal review and a full report to the board about the funding of the process, and if it meets the standards, and the effort is going to be to reduce the cost to the extent we possibly can. So I don't know what that does to that item, but I'm just saying that while if you go forward with the item, we still have a lot of work to do before we actually go forward with the project. And I'm not talking about an unnecessarily long delay. It may only be a week, week and a half. But we're going to have to look at the overall scope, and I've got to make sure that the money that we're using is in total compliance.
Any other comments about the agenda? Chancellor, I thank you for that, for you voicing that about that particular item. This item has been, it was on the work session in November of 2020. It is, has had an expansion of scope, and we'll discuss that if it stays on the agenda and we get to it. And I just, you know, it would be good if it had more review. If the board was presented with all the information and had time to digest it and consider it, because it's not the board's fault that it's been three months since it was on a work session, and then it's coming back to us with when the expanded scope and significant expansion of expenses and costs. Anyone else?
I would recommend-
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Davis, did you say something?
No, I was going to say, I would just recommend that Mr. Watley gives us a detailed review of this particular item when it comes up in the, in the meeting.
Anyone else? Then we'll go call the question. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll, and everyone respond with a yes or a no.
Mr. Al Thompson.
No.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Oh.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Oh.
Mr. Matt Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
No.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
No.
Mr. Chuck Smith. You have three yes, five no's.
Okay, is there a motion to amend the agenda? Because we need to, is there a motion? If someone has a specific change in the agenda, if you just make a motion to amend it such and such, then in a second, then we can reconsider the agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to amend the agenda to move item 7A1 to the work session for the, in the end-up review and discussion.
There's been a motion by Mr. McAnally to amend the agenda as specified. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Mitchell. Discussion.
I'll hold my comments to the work session.
And I would just say, all this is about fairness to the board and the board having proper time and being well-informed in a timely manner, and then they can make a clear decision. Any further comments or discussion? If not, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to amend the agenda as specified, please call the roll, Ms. Wilkins.
Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Ms. Wilkins, what is the outcome?
You have one no, seven yes.
Okay, so the agenda is approved, is amended. We move to item five, is approval of the minutes of the January 13th, 2020 meeting. Board members have received this in advance and had a chance to consider it and look for any changes. At this time, I will entertain a motion on the minutes of the January 13th meeting.
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the minutes of the January 13th meeting? Seeing now, we'll call the question. Will you call the roll on this, please, Ms. Wilkins?
Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods.
Yes.
Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Chuck Smith.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Ms. Wilkins, anyone signed up for public comment?
No, sir.
We'll move to item seven. There are no, no items, nothing under Academic and Student Affairs, Adult Education, Facilities, Physical, Information Technologies, and Workforce Development. We'll move to item eight, Executive Legal and Public Information. Item eight, A1, the 2021 Legislative Agenda for the Alabama Community College System. This was on last month's work session. I think the board has been fully informed of this. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Mr. Kennard. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we'll move to the question and the vote to approve the 2021 Legislative Agenda. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods.
Yes.
Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Okay, item is approved. Item eight, A2 is the Professional Legal Liability Insurance for the Alabama Community College System. Mr. O'Brien, do you have anything to share with specifically? I think at the work session, we didn't have all, quite all the details.
We, we did receive a, a final quote from our current underwriter, RSUI. It entails a approximately 5% increase in the annual premium and adjustments to the self-insured retention amounts for some of the colleges. It is the, by far, the, the best quote we got for the coming year. And we were advised that the, the rise in premium and the adjustments to the SIR were a result of the current market environment due to the pandemic. But this is the best offer we received.
Any questions for Mr. O'Brien? At this time, I'll entertain a motion on the Professional Legal Liability Insurance.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Woods. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Seeing now, I'll call the question. We'll call the roll for all those, and their vote on Professional Legal Liability Insurance for the Alabama Community College System.
Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Smith.
Insurance is approved. Next item is personnel. Chancellor, do we have anything under personnel?
We do, we do. Nikita, it should be on. I'd like to today to recommend, well, we've gone through the advertising process for CAC, Central Alabama Community College. We've gone through the interviews, had three really good, in my opinion. And out of that process, I have selected Jeff Lynn, who you all know, to serve as president of the Community College, Central Alabama Community College. Susan, was, you, you were on the interview, interview process, and I think you would agree we had three good candidates.
Yes, sir. We had three very qualified candidates for the position, and I would like to make a motion that we accept your recommendation for Jeff Lynn to be president of Central Alabama.
There's a motion by Ms. Foye on the chancellor's recommendation for Jeff Lynn to become the president at Central Alabama Community College. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Woods, second. Okay, discussion, comments from the board.
Let's, let's let Nikita read a little bit.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, and then I'd like for the discussion, because there's a lot of good things to talk about.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Mr. Jeff Lynn began working for the Alabama Community College System on October 1, 2016. Mr. Lynn has more than 20 years of workforce and economic development experience across several southeastern states. Prior to his role at the ACCS, Mr. Lynn served as the Executive Director of Workforce Development, LED Fast Start for Louisiana Economic Development. Mr. Lynn moved to Louisiana in November 2008 from Georgia, where he led a similar role in state workforce development leadership. While working in Georgia Workforce Program, he built a program that maintained a number one or number two national ranking for a decade. He served in that capacity in Georgia. Also, he worked in advanced manufacturing for Silver Vision. Mr. Lynn has held positions in manufacturing supply chain, headed an ERP installation project, and led the training department for ASMT, Applied Science and Manufacturing Technology. Mr. Lynn began his career while in college, working full-time in manufacturing and the hospitality industry while studying organizational management from Auburn University. In August 2017, Mr. Lynn was appointed to the Alabama Workforce Council. Mr. Lynn co-chair of the statewide economic attainment committee, which is a governor appointment committee tasked with developing a state attainment goal and strategy. Thank you.
Chairman, I, I probably, and this is not intended to be disrespectful of anyone, but I have probably had more positive phone calls from that entire service area about the activity that has occurred during the time Jeff has served as interim. And I feel good about this recommendation. I, I think we will see a significant move forward at CAC, at Central Alabama Community College. He's totally dedicated and committed to that, and we're excited for the community that is being served by that school.
Thank you, Chancellor. Anything else from the board?
I'd just personally like to congratulate Jeff. He has exemplary work ethic. He's committed to the system, which he has shown over the past years, and I've repeatedly called him a rock star, so I expect him to continue to excel in his new position.
No pressure.
I would just, I would just second what Milton has said. It's been an honor working with Jeff, and I'm certain his talents are going to produce many good things at Central
Jeff certainly has a wealth of, of knowledge and experience, and I think he's going to serve CAC exceptionally well. And Jeff, if you're listening, we're sort of proud for you and look forward to great things ahead for you in CAC.
Jeff, I'd like to just say congratulations, and before we, I, I think that's, well, we haven't voted yet, but we just thank you for your service thus far, and, you know, we're excited for you and appreciate the work that you've done for the system thus far, so.
And I'd like to say too, Jeff, that I look forward to continuing to work with you. I will tell you all that our community in the service area has indeed been very impressed with Jeff since he came to CAC, and he has ingratiated himself into the communities that the college serves. There are a lot of folks that are certainly in his court and are looking forward to working with him from the, the local school systems to the economic development entities to the business leadership. And so it will, it'll be a very happy day for here in Central Alabama.
Congratulations, Jeff. You're making a difference, and thank you so much for your service.
Anyone else? Great comments from the board. And it just goes without saying, the great job that Jeff has done for the system, and I know that he's continued that at Central Alabama. And as, as Mr. Davis said, we're just looking forward to more great things. And that's true. We're sincere about that and excited about this, this new chapter in that really fine institution of Central Alabama Community College. If there's no other comments, we'll call the question.
Give Jeff, well, go ahead, Boone, and then-
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and call the question. There's been a motion by Ms. Foye and a second by Mr. Woods to accept the chancellor's recommendations. Jeff Lynn is the new president at Central Alabama Community College. Ms. Wilkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Al Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. John Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Foye.
Yes.
Mr. Matt Woods.
Yes.
Crystal Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Milton Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Blake McAnally.
Yes.
Chuck Smith.
Since I'm the last one, it's a yes, Jeff, and I'll give you the golden buzzer award.
Unanimously, Jeff Lynn is, has, the board has approved the chancellor's recommendation for him to be the new president at Central Alabama Community College.
Jeff, would you like to comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Chairman Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Thank you so much. I'm very extremely happy and very humbled to serve our students, our employees, and our entire community. I'm very excited. We got a lot of work to do, and I'm ready to get it done. And thank you so much for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Lynn. Chancellor Baker, anything on personnel? And then the chancellor's report is next.
That's it, personnel.
Okay.
Boone, if you would give us kind of an update on legislation?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Chairman Thompson and board. What I'd like to do is go through the agenda that, that you all just passed and just kind of give you an update on where we stand on a number of these items. Many of these items have already begun to move forward through the legislative process. On the construction management legislation, the first bullet, that bill was prefiled the week before legislative session began. House Majority Leader Nathaniel Ledbetter is the House sponsor of that legislation. Senator Donnie Chastain is the sponsor in the Senate. In fact, there is a public hearing on this bill in the House Education Policy Committee later today. And we have several speakers that will be going on behalf of the Community College System in support of the legislation. The second bill was the, the tenure legislation. We are still working with AEA on a few issues that hopefully we can resolve on that. So that bill's not been introduced yet, but we hope to be able to work those things out in the near future, and hopefully that will come forward in the next couple of weeks. Third bullet was on the lottery. I'm sure some of you probably read, Senator Marsh introduced a bill last night that I believe will probably be the vehicle for this issue. His bill is a full-scale gambling bill, not, not only a lottery bill, but it includes casino gambling as well as the casinos that are currently operated by the Porch Creek Indians. It also includes other types of gambling as well. And so I expect, I believe it's, that bill's expected to be in Senate Committee, probably, I think, right now, actually. And I would expect that to come before the Senate for further discussion, perhaps tomorrow. The fourth bullet that, that was on our agenda dealt with broadband access and expansion. Senator Marsh also introduced a bill yesterday dealing with that issue. We've had great discussions with, with ceasefire. They have committed to putting in a substantial investment in Alabama over the next few years, and we're very positive about where that may lead. I spoke to Senator Marsh this morning. He's committed to sit down with us. He wants to learn more about the discussions we've had on that issue and how the Community College System and our colleges can fit into that, to that project. And so we look forward to getting that set up in the very near future. And then the, the last two bullets were budget-related, and I'm happy to say that the governor released her budget last week, education and general budgets. And in the education budget, her proposed budget funds a vast majority of, of the things that you all had approved in the legislative agenda, specifically 6% across-the-board increase in O and M, also includes funding for a 2% pay raise that would include community college employees, also includes an additional $3 million for dual enrollment scholarships to, to be able to keep up with the demand that we're seeing across our system there, includes some new money for correctional education services. And specifically, we were very pleased to see that the governor included the full ask of the $10 million that we had asked for to help us, the system and our colleges be able to do more short-term certification and credentialing training, which is what we're hearing from business and industry every day, that they need more quick, you know, quick start training. So that money will be specifically used in that regard. So that's kind of a very quick update. You know, public access at the legislature is very different this year, so we've had to find new ways to, to keep in touch and doing a lot of watching over the computer. But we'll continue to monitor things, but we're very pleased at where we're at so far, and I think we've got a good session ahead for the system.
Let me mention this. I've been having conversations and meetings with the new director of, pardon the parole board. Going back to life tech, the current approach is to reestablish life tech. I've been in communication with the senator, that's in his district, and he chairs the general fund budget. They will be funded in a combination, general fund and with funding through our program as well. So that, it will be stood up again, and we're going to have to do, they're doing it primarily. We've got to add some fencing and do some other kinds of things, but the general fund is taking care of those kind of expenses. So I think we will have a very well-coordinated prison education program if we- as we move forward with whatever the circumstances with prison education. And with Cam Ward as being the director, we have an ongoing relationship. We've all agreed to work together side by side. And I think it's going to be a lot smoother in the future operating prison education, correction education. Mr. Chairman.
That's great news, Chancellor. Thank you for that information from you and Boone. Anything else, sir?
That's, that's it.
Okay, very good. Committee reports.
I've interrupted you twice and I don't mean to.
You're not interrupting me.
I hope it's, I hope it's okay because I, like, for example, enrollment numbers, I asked the student services people to communicate, provide you those kinds of information. And anytime you need to talk with a department head, certainly you know you're, it's wide open for you to do so. So the open, there's no way I can funnel everything to you or you can understand all that's going on. But feel free to make contacts whenever you need to. And we'll provide you information and oftentimes I just have a standard policy, send this out. So if you have any questions, please let me know and make me aware that you aren't getting the kinds of information you need, if that is the case. Okay, I'll be quiet.
No, Chancellor, you, one of the most important parts of our meeting is your report. Thank you for all of that. We'll go to committee reports. Mr. McAnally, anything from the Finance Committee?
Nothing today.
Okay. Mr. Smith, anything from Facilities that you'd like to report?
No, sir.
Ms. Brown, anything from Policy?
We have policy in the work session that we'll be discussing.
Very good. Mr. Davis, anything from Personnel or you have anything in this part?
Yes, Chairman Thompson, I would like to report out in regards to the Chancellor's evaluation. The Personnel Committee consisting of myself, Susan Foye and Blake McAnally initiated the Chancellor's performance review on December 1st, 2020 in accordance to Section 6 of the Chancellor's Employment Agreement, which requires an annual review to be completed by December 31st of each calendar year. And we utilize the Alabama Community Colleges Systems Customer Evaluation Process, which provides each member of the Board of Trustees the opportunity to objectively evaluate and have input into the Chancellor's performance review in accordance to the metrics that were outlined in that agreement. And once again, the board's collective evaluation of the Chancellor was exceptional. On a rating scale with 1 as low and 5 as high, the Chancellor's composite score was 4.82. And the board has complete confidence in the Chancellor's abilities as he continues to lead the Alabama Community College System. And as customary, I always try to pull a comment from one of our board members. And one of the board members shared this comment, which I think is the general consensus of the board. Chancellor Baker has done an exceptional job this year. Given the unique challenges that have been presented this year, it would have been easy to let ongoing plans or initiatives take a backseat. Chancellor Baker has pushed forward and introduced several new ambitious projects. These projects included the implementation of banner at the remaining colleges, enhanced marketing efforts, building and renovation projects, the hiring of several full-time presidents, and the introduction and revision of several key board policies. The Chancellor has been an effective communicator as we have moved our board meetings to a virtual setting. And I'm pleased with the way he has adopted to the challenges presented by COVID-19. Thanks to Chancellor Baker's leadership, I'm confident students will have a greater opportunity for success and the ACCS will be well-positioned as we enter 2021. And Chairman Thompson, that concludes my report. And again, I want to thank the, my fellow trustees for their evaluation. The tool that we use is a 20-page tool and I have promised before the end of the year, we will revise that tool to make it more succinct and easier for us to use. Thank you, Chairman.
Likewise, Chairman Davis, I cannot thank you and the Personnel Committee enough, but especially your leadership. You've been proactive, you've asserted yourself, you've cracked the whip when necessary to keep us on a schedule and a timeline that is appropriate for this. And you've done it in a very tactful and gracious manner. Just thank you for your service and your leadership on this because it's not easy to do. And, and just congratulations to Chancellor Baker. It's all well-deserved. And the board knows that from top, from end to end. Any other comments on this from the, yeah. Any comments from the board? If not, prior to our concluding the board meeting, I won't take just a moment to read something that from time to time, it's just good for us to hear. This is the conflict of interest statement that we all signed upon joining this board. It reads, "The standard of behavior for the Alabama Community College System and its Board of Trustees is that all board members scrupulously avoid conflicts of interest between the interests of the Alabama Community College System on one hand and personal, professional and business interests on the other. This includes avoiding potential and actual conflicts of interest as well as perceptions of conflicts of interest. I understand that the purposes of this policy are to protect the integrity of the Alabama Community College System and its institutions. The Alabama Community College System's decision-making process should enable and ensure our constituencies to have confidence in our integrity and to protect the integrity and reputations of volunteers, staff and board members. Upon and before my appointment, I will make a full written disclosure of interest, relationships and holdings that could potentially result in a conflict of interest. This written disclosure will be kept on file and I will update it as appropriate. Understand that the purposes of this policy are to protect the integrity of the public office I hold in the Alabama Community College System. In the course of meetings or activities, I will disclose any interest in a transaction or decision where I, including my business and/or other nonprofit affiliations, my family and/or my significant other, employer or close associates will receive a benefit or gain. After disclosure, I understand that I will not be permitted to vote on the question." And it ends, "I understand that this policy is meant to supplement good judgment and I will respect its spirit as well as its word." I have nothing further today. Anything else from the board? At this time, we will meet again, we'll open the work session immediately, adjournment of this regular meeting and we will meet again March 10th, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Milton.
Your second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, we stand adjourned. At this time, I will open the work session.
Chairman, I make a motion to amend the agenda of the work session to include the Wallace Community College Regional Training Center.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Smith. I don't believe it's necessary because the work session is, we don't go through that. It's an informal setting. But if the board would like that, we can proceed with it. I want to do whatever the board feels like. We've already, I think, wanted to move it to this work session and that's totally appropriate. That will come under Facilities and we can do it, we can make it item 8. The first, own facilities. Any objection from the board on that?
Yeah, none from me. I guess as a matter of record, I'll second if the motion has to carry. So we'll have it official.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of adding the Selma, Wallace, Wallace-Selma project at the Demopolis site to the work session agenda, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? It's so done. Beginning the work session, executive. Mr. O'Brien?
The first item on the work session agenda is Central Alabama's request for review and approval of its current mission statement. There have been no changes since it was last approved. Does anyone have any questions relating to Central Alabama's mission statement?
Okay, move to item 2.
Item 2 is Gaston State's request for review and approval of its current mission statement. Once again, there have been no revisions since its last approval. Does anyone have any questions relating to Gaston State's mission statement? We'll move to item 3, which is Northwest Shoals Community College request for review and approval of its current mission statement. Does anyone have any questions relating to the mission statement of Northwest Shoals? Mr. Chairman, I believe Sarah Calhoun was going to address the next four items.
Very good.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
The next four items on the agenda are policy considerations for the 300 series. These have been reviewed by the Policy Committee. And these updates are in an effort to both streamline the 300 series and make them more efficient for both board review and for our users. So the action item or work session number four is for 30201 Insurance and Fidelity Bonds. This policy is expanding the scope to all insurance policies that we recommend the colleges hold instead of only focusing on the fidelity bonds of their officers. Policy 30401 Financial Reporting. Our effort here was to encompass all the financial reporting requirements of our colleges into one policy. So we have eliminated 304.02 and included it here in 30401. 30801 Cash Investment Management. We're adding into the policy language the requirements at the cash that our colleges' bank are both with FDIC insured and also part of the SAFE program. That was originally part of the procedures, but we felt it necessary to include it in the policy. And then the final policy is 320.01. This is a new policy relating to auxiliary services, which details how the colleges can operate with their food service, vending, student housing, things of that nature. This policy had not been previously approved by the Board of Trustees and we felt it appropriate for the colleges to have guidance on these services. Have any, answer any questions you might have?
I'd just say, Mr. Chairman and Ms. Calhoun, I appreciate the policies. Appreciate the efforts to standardize reporting on the financial side and just commend the efforts.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just want to say thank you to the Policy Committee too. And also, you know, having our committee, our P makes all of this a lot easier. So thank you once again to everybody that was involved in that effort, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anything else on these policy changes? Thanks so much for your work, Ms. Brown, and for that of the Policy Committee. It's made up by Susan Foye and Matt Woods. If there's nothing else, we'll move to Facilities. We've got the Wallace State Selma, the President's recommendation for the work at the Armory we bought for repurpose, to repurpose that armory for a training facility. Mr. Watley?
No, can I get the PowerPoint presentation pulled up, please?
Second, Az is pulling it up on his end.
Okay, thank you.
Give me a second, small difficulty.
While you're doing that, I will go ahead and start talking about it. We've already seen this project one time. As Mr. Thompson mentioned, this was first brought to the board during the November work session to talk about the scope. At the time, we presented this project, we were targeting a budget around $1.5 million for construction with a total project budget around $2 million. If you look at what that would include, that was per square foot, pretty limited renovation. A, you know, finish upgrades, some modifications to bathrooms. Since the November work session, we continued to update the design based on input from a number of stakeholders, certainly Dr. Mitchell and his team, the folks there in Demopolis. A lot of folks had input on this. And so we bid the job here last week, the job bid on November, I'm sorry, on February 2nd. And we'll show you the bid results here in a second. But over the course of that time, from when it was approved to the board in November, all the way through bid, we added, there were some scope increases. There was a more extensive renovation. I would still classify the entire scope of the project as a renovation. We have not added any square feet to the project within the numbers that are included in the action item. But more extensively, you get into, in a more extensive renovation, you get into adding walls, adding doors, interior upgraded, equipment locations, updated electrical requirements for that equipment. That turns into more HVAC. I will tell you that some of the price increases are due to just market inflation. I think everybody is aware that construction is going up even in the middle of the pandemic. Give an example, steel is up 20% since January 1st. I can't tell you between the 1.5 and the 2.3, I can't tell you what portion of that is attributable to inflation and what is attributable to scope changes. Dr. Mitchell, would you care to comment at all, you or your team, care to comment on the changes that have been included in the scope of this product?
Yes, this, good morning, Mr. Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be here. One of the things, and we have been at Demopolis about a year and a half, almost two years. And from that time, being there, we started trying to put together programs or pull together programs that were existing there as well as recruiting and trying to build our footprint there. We started this project in thinking, as Mr. Watley has said, that it was originally, we walked through and we thought, oh wow, this may be just a little more cosmetic. But as we continued to go into the building with various stakeholders, as Mr. Halfcock, who is the campus director there, met with business and industry as well as other stakeholders in the areas. And remember, we're serving not just Marengo County, Demopolis, but those surrounding counties as well. We saw a need, oh, a need was expressed to have additional programs. to have additional programs that we had not originally planned, such as industrial maintenance, such as commercial electrical. We were going in initially with welding, which was already there, welding, truck driving, HVAC, and programs of that nature. And, and once we had an opportunity to survey as well as talk with the existing industry in that area, we decided we may need to look at those programs because that was a stated need by them. And if anybody else on the team would like to add on to that, that's fine, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Hathcock, we see you've got your hand raised. Would you care to comment on that?
It'll take a second.
Mr. Watley, while he's coming up, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I understand the scope changed, but $70,000 in design fees? That's, that's quite a lot of change in design.
Yes, sir, the design fees, we use a table published by the Division of Construction Management. And our design fees are tied to the actual construction price of the project. And so as, as construction prices fluctuate, the design fees fluctuate as well.
Aren't these fees delegated through the state legislature? How's those fees arrived?
I do not know if it's the state legislature that dictates the fees, it's the DCM that publishes those. But it's a, it's a, all of our architect agreements state that we will use the DCM fee table. But I can't, I don't know specifically.
Developed by DCM, I don't think it's legislative.
Yeah, I don't know that it is.
Mr. Mitchell, I would tell you that my experience having to work within the framework of these fee schedules and the DCM is legislatively authorized to perform the function. A part of the function is determining the fee schedule. And for many decades, there's been a fee schedule that ABC publishes and now DCM publishes. And it's a sliding scale, it's a percentage of the construction based on the value of the construction. The smaller the construction cost, the larger the percentage of the construction, the design fee is attributed. As the, as the construction cost goes up, the design percentage, the fee that a designer gets is, it goes down, but it's still a function of, as Mr. Watley said, of the construction value. So it's, you know, it's, it's pretty well defined and everybody in the state that works on public money is essentially obligated to work by that schedule. And I would tell you this too, that typically a renovation project is significantly more involved for the designers. And on top of the scheduled fee, there is an additional percentage. And Ed, you might help me, but I think it's a 50% increase on the, on the fee for the design for a renovation project.
It is 25%.
25%, okay. So an additional 25% above the schedule for renovation project because there's significantly more work involved upfront to understand what you have and, you know, study to understand what's there before you can begin the designing. Designing a new building, it's a clean slate, then that 25% is unnecessary. But that is the state schedule, it's mandated by DCM, previously by ABC. And it's even held in practice as a starting point for architects and engineers doing work across the state for private projects also.
Yeah, and I also want to add on to that, Blake, that we're not allowed to bid engineering services. They're selected based on qualifications. And with these percentages already in place, it makes you focus strictly on the qualifications of the engineer as opposed to getting into some type of a bidding war.
Right, and that, that is actually, that is defined by the legislature. The laws that govern architects and engineers prohibit us to bid on price. The, the theory behind that is you don't want the cheapest guy designing your bridges.
And I'll add one more comment to all that. We, we set architect fees really at three different points in the project. When we first hired an architect, we'll start off with the estimated construction amount. And their initial fee will be based on the fee percentage table and also the estimated amount. Then, once a project is awarded, we have an actual construction amount, we'll go back and update their fee and of course reconcile it and tie their fee back to the actual construction amount. And then at the end of the project, once all change orders are incorporated, adds and deducts, then we'll reconcile the final architect's fee to the final construction value using that same fee table.
Watley?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think I'm on my own.
Go ahead.
Chairman Thompson, Mr. Watley, a little bit to speak to program implementation here in Demopolis at the Tech Center. One of the things that we did was survey industry here locally and in this region. Obviously, we wanted that to drive the instruction, to drive the programs that we implemented here in Demopolis. We spoke to numerous employers, sent a survey to employers to gauge what programs to implement here in Demopolis. So I think part of that was when we changed or looked at program implementation, obviously that changed a little bit of scope of the project. But we arrived at those programs through careful consideration from input from both industry and local chambers of commerce about possible future needs that will become in this region.
Ezra, if you would, would you please pull back up the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, sir. You were talking about the Wallace one, correct?
Right.
All right. And which slide do you want me to be on?
The one that shows the overall budget, please.
All right. This one?
After we got the bids in, we took a look at the base bids and the alternates that were included. And after talking with a lot of folks, including Dr. Mitchell, his team, also here in the system office, the recommended or the requested construction contract that we're bringing forth for the board's consideration comes to a total of $2.38 million. And then other items are tied to that, such as the design piece. We still have a 10% contingency. It is typically best practice to allow 10% in the budget when you're talking about renovation. If it's brand new construction, we typically allow 5%. You're generally going to have more unknowns and more contingency on a renovation project. So that leads us to a total project budget of two point or total expected cost of $2.9 million. Originally, we had talked about the system putting in $2 million with nothing coming from the college. After talking with Dr. Mitchell and the financial folks here in the system office, we agreed to a split or came to a recommended split of 2.3 million from the system office with the balance coming from Wallace Selma funds. Go to the next slide, please. I wanted to bring this up and show everyone the bid tab that we have. The base bid that we got for the work to the existing project was $2.2 million. We compare that to the next two bidders, Kaiser and NC Morgan, each at 2.7 million. We were very concerned when we saw this. Typically, when you see two bidders grouped up like that and then an outlier, you go to the outlier and make sure they're comfortable with their number. We did that with Fraser Owlesley and they came back to us and said they are very comfortable with their number. They're glad to honor $2.2 million. Internally, we discussed that and the likelihood of us getting a better price by rebidding this project, we feel is very low. And so if there's a desired price change in the project, it's really going to involve cutting scope out of the project. Where, for the scope that we have, we are fairly convinced the 2.2 million is going to be the best number we're going to get. And then the total recommended contract amount also includes alternate number one, which is paving the main parking area. According to the bid regulations we have to follow, we do have the option of adding other items later in the project. We can add via change order, if the board approved it, alternate number two, which would be an addition to the building and the two additional parking areas there in the, in the parking lot. But the main parking area is included on amendment, on alternate number one. So adding the base and alternate number one gets us to the proposed contract amount of $2.3 million. Mr. Davis, you mentioned a detailed recap of all the scope changes. I do not have that in front of me. I know that we continue to make scope changes really until about the first week of January. These changes involved equipment layouts, power requirements, HVAC needed to get to that equipment. And I will be happy to put together a timeline of what changed and when. I do think that our second submitted, the DCM, went in around December or around the mid-November. And so we definitely had that submitted plus one more in December, which accounted for all the, the final design on this project. But I will be happy to put together a list of what changed over the interim.
Yeah, I think that will be beneficial to the board. And what's the validity of the, the bids? What's, are they good for 90 days?
I would have to confirm with the architect that a minimum 30. I think that after, after 30 days, the contractor is allowed to pull them back. I don't sense that in this case, this contractor does want to perform the project. Typically, we've been able to go beyond that. But I think 30 days is what is dictated by the bid instructions.
Okay, thank you.
President Mitchell, thank you for being here. We really appreciate your presence and those others from, that have, have worked with this, this new site in Demopolis. I do have a question or two and Ed, or President Mitchell, what was the, I was totally supportive of buying this, this armory for a training site. What, what did we pay and what do we have invested in this as far as any improvements so far?
Mr. Thompson, I do not have that number, I can research it.
North of six for the building and no, no money's been spent on it to date.
So we paid $600,000.
Figures, okay. And, and Ed, what was the, what was the proposed cost expenditures that you brought to us back at the November work session? What was that?
We were targeting 1.5 million in construction and which would result in 2 million total.
And now we're, now we're at 2,960?
Yes, sir.
And, and I just, I want to say, from the get-go, I've been for this project. It's needed, it's in an area that needs this training. And I've never wavered from that until we got this increase in scope and it was done. I just felt like that the board needed a good understanding of this and a thorough briefing and not have to bone on it in 30 seconds after that or less. It's, it's being fair to the board and to have this expansion of costs which may be needed and necessary and, and, and real good, really good for that area and appropriate for that area and for this training facility. But to have that and for not to come back to the board, for the board's understanding, it, it just, it does not enable us to do our job appropriately. And that's, I just wanted to air my feelings about that because I, I think we need to look, look at these projects on a basis of need and necessity. And this may very well be exactly what this area needs. But if it's not, it's up to the board to make that decision. But the board needs to be fully informed in a timely manner, not at the last minute.
Dr. Mitchell, this is Chuck, I want to thank you because putting this project together, because of the six years I've been on this board, this is the first request of a dime I've seen from Wallace Selma. And thank you for where you run your school and maintaining your financial situation over there.
Anything else on this project, Chancellor, President Mitchell, Mr. Watley, anything else, if, if board?
Mr. Chairman, considering that the bids are good for 30 days and I understand Mr. Watley's position, I would just make mention that if the additional information we have requested is provided to us, it might be necessary to, to call a meeting, a special meeting to address this contract prior to that 30-day expiration.
Good point. Certainly would be appropriate if, if timeliness is a matter and it gets down to us being able to keep the commitments that were given to us based on the timeline and expiration date. So we don't want anything to slip up. My request is that the board be fully informed of this and that, you know, that we, if we have a call meeting, we'll do it. Maybe an opportunity to do that is we may, may have some information sessions that come up between now and the next regular board meeting. And we might just even have a brief board meeting if we can give proper notice. We might could even, I'll get with the Chancellor and Mr. Davis, Vice Chair Davis, and we'll, we'll see what options we have and what suits the schedule of board members. But excellent point, Mr. McAnally, thank you. Anything else from the board on this project?
Mr. Chairman, also in Ed sharing his list of scope changes, I'm sure the Chancellor will also share any findings that he, he has with us as well to help us make a good decision. We appreciate you Chancellor for, for reviewing it in further detail.
Excellent point, Ms. Brown. Chancellor Baker, thank you for just giving some insight there and letting us know how that you'll be reviewing this. I know each of us takes very seriously the responsibility we have in handling taxpayer money. And we want to be good stewards of what we're entrusted with. And that needs to be one of our utmost priorities. Anyone else? If not, we'll move to item nine, Gadsden State Community College, building demolition.
Ezra, if you don't mind, would you pull up the second presentation that I sent you?
Yes, sir, one moment, let me close the other one.
Really, the next three items on the agenda, the first two come from Gadsden State. Next slide, please. Gadsden State is in the coming weeks going to bid a project that involves the demolition of three unused needed facilities there at the main campus. It's actually two individual campuses, the Wallace Drive campus and the East Broad campus, but they're right across the street from each other. So it's really all three in the same location. The three buildings in question are Browder Hall, Mitchell Hall, and Real Time Reporting. Collectively, these three buildings account for 54,497 square feet. Again, these buildings are unused, well, two of the three are unused, were in the process of moving the remaining people out of Real Time Reporting. I believe that there are six people who currently use that, that building part-time and we're in the process of moving them to a different location on campus. The intent is simply to get rid of buildings that we don't need, that are not compliant with ADA and other considerations. And really, buildings we're never going to use. We were scheduled to bid this project on February 15th of this year and pay for this, approved by the board with Gadsden Community College Local Funds. Next slide, please. Was asked last week, a few questions were asked about these buildings when they were built, when they were abandoned. Mitchell Hall was built in 1928, abandoned 10 years ago in 2011. Browder built in 1965 and abandoned last year. And the Real Time Reporting was built in 1947. It is still currently in limited use and we are in the process of moving people out right now. Another question was asked about what are the yearly costs associated with these buildings? Right now, we spend about $26,000 a year for these. Right now, we spend about $26,000 a year for these buildings and utilities and insurance cost. I would point out, these are the costs that we can count. There's certainly a lot of other costs that we know are there that we can't quantify. Certainly, there's a potential for a bad event when you have an abandoned building there at campus. But more importantly, an old abandoned building sitting next to a modern new building really detracts from that modern new building. And so the image we're trying to present for our students and our potential students is really hurt when we have old dilapidated buildings sitting there unused. Next slide, please. Again, we're talking about the Gadsden State Main Campus. Next slide. If you're familiar with that campus, here is the Browder Hall, again, built 1965 and abandoned last year. Next slide. You can go through these, Azrael, showing some of the interior pictures of Browder. Again, it is well past the point of being able to be used. Mitchell Hall, in my opinion, is probably the worst of the three. It's been abandoned for 10 years. Very clear that we're not going to use this building. Very clear that it needs to be removed. These buildings all have problems with HVAC, some structural issues, ADA access. You can see in that picture, those are the infamous nine-by-nine floor tiles. So those typically contain a lot of asbestos, things that we need to get rid of. And then the last one is the Real Time Reporting Building located not far from from Browder. Keep going now, please. Again, aged, worn out, HVAC, ceilings falling through.
Back up one slide.
Go back one, please.
I would imagine that all that insulation has asbestos in it tremendously.
Certainly, certainly. So I just wanted to show a few of these pictures to give an idea of how we got the decision of, and this is made a consultation with Gads' architect to go ahead and get rid of the facilities. I've spoken many times about this and I've told our presidents that the best option, I believe, is to renovate existing buildings when they can be renovated. It's certainly the most cost efficient. And I'm not sure if President Rogers is on the phone. We got a really good example of what you can do renovating buildings. We renovated four buildings down at Enterprise State, done a very nice job of it. But there does come a point when buildings can no longer be renovated to an acceptable level. And when that occurs, we do need to get rid of them either through sale or construction, but if the case may be demolition, whatever the case may be. For this total project, we're looking, all three buildings will be bid as part of one demolition package. We're estimating a total of $700,000 to demolish the three buildings, which would result in a total project budget of around $846,000. Can answer any questions from the board about this project?
Ed, I guess this is not really facility related, but I was just curious about the names. Are they affiliated with any families associated with Gadsden State by us demoing those buildings? Do we need to maybe get a plaque or something on? I don't know the history at all, but I just know if someone's name's on it, there might be someone in that community that might be offended with our demo of the building or we might just need to at least look at it and address it.
We did check into that. There are no, the three names that are associated with the buildings, the two names, I guess, they are not tied to donors. Gadsden did the research and I can provide you the specific answers. I believe one was a former employee that was honored through the naming of a building. But I don't think there were any restrictions on the ability to demolish a building. Certainly, if there were, there are things we can do to preserve the name even if the building is not preserved.
Okay, I just want to make sure we addressed it. Thank you.
This one sticks in my craw a lot. Number one, if you're going to demolish a building, first thing you got to do is hire an architect. So that 53,000 design fee really sticks in my craw on demolishing a building. I understand the asbestos abatement, lead abatement, all that, but that could be built into the project scope rather than having to have a design fee from an architect. The other thing that really sticks in my craw about this is we as a board, future boards, I don't know if we need to put it in policies or procedures that when a building, when you're building a new science building and abandoning an old science building, the cost of demolishing that old building needs to be captured in the new building. So we can get rid of it in a timely manner and quit wasting the monies we've spent on monthly maintenance, insurance, everything we're putting on that building. So I'd really like to see, Crystal, if y'all could look to see if there's something we could put in a policy to stop this from happening. A building sitting there for 10 years should have been demolished nine years ago. So I'd just like for us to consider any new building, what are we doing with the old building?
I would address the, you know, with respect to the design fees, of course, it is state law that a design professional has to be involved in demolishing a public building. So, you know, unless we're going to get a state law change, we got to do this. We also have, these buildings have, they've got to be bid. And to be able to get reasonable, consistent bids, we have to understand what are in the buildings that we're asking contractors to tear down. If there's a massive structure in the middle of this building and we don't tell anybody about it because we don't do plan, we don't investigate it and report it in a bid package, we're going to receive a massive request for a change order. So, you know, there's gas, electric, water utilities are possibly still connected to these buildings. And it's not just, you know, the architect, it's going to be the engineers working with them to ensure that the building's properly disconnected and it's safe to be torn down. And I, you know, I'm obviously in the business of professional design services. And every time we take on a project, we ask an architect to take on a project, they're signing and sealing that package, it's going out for bid, they're buying an awful lot of liability. And, you know, personally in my small company, I have to carry $2 million worth of just professional liability insurance, not counting casual liability, umbrellas and other policies. So, you know, these fees are justified and it's, again, tied to the fee schedule that is DCMs, WASABCs, and they have the authorization of the legislature to set those.
I echo that comment. Very true.
How do we, how do we put, how do we put in place though, if you're abandoning the building, capture that cost upfront instead of coming back later?
I'm all for that, Chuck. I would favor that policy. You know, it takes, there's a lot of moving parts in that. We have to finish a building, move people into it, totally abandon the other building and then tear it down. But certainly that could be done and, you know, it's something that will require time, money and resources to determine. But in this instance, going 10 years beyond the building's life is, was excessive. And, you know, we spent, if these were all 10 years out, we spent at least $300,000 probably, not including the potential liability because the buildings are still open and standing.
Mr. Watley?
Yes, sir.
Do I recall you telling us one time that you had a square foot matrix for demolition?
One time I reached out to a cost estimator and asked them what they were including for demolition. At the time, he gave me a number of $20 a square foot. There are economies of scale that change that. You can get demolition right now, I think, if you work it out because we have 50,000 square feet. This comes out to about $12 a square foot. We did one job up in Calhoun that actually came to $8 a square foot. And so we tried to, we tried to compare historical versus where we are. We think this is a reasonable expectation. But you're right, at one time I did give you a number of 20 a square foot for one project. Can I answer any of the questions regarding the demolition project of a Gads? If none, the next hour, the next project also comes from Gadsden State. It is an HVAC replacement at Naylor Hall. The HVAC system there is worn out, need replacement. It's a 33,000 square foot building. And we were hoping to move forward with a bid on the 12th to replace that HVAC. Again, also, this will be funded with Gadsden State's local funds. Naylor Hall is right there. Go back one. You can see it in close proximity to the, to the other buildings we've been discussing there at the main campus. We estimate that the cost to replace the HVAC, the construction cost, we're looking at one and a quarter million dollars, which adding in all the other, we expect to spend around $1.5 million. And again, this should all come from Gadsden State's local funds. Can I answer any questions about the Naylor Hall HVAC replacement project? The final project this month comes from Sheldon State. It is the proposed replacement of a cooling tower, again, another HVAC component. This is located there at Sheldon State's Martin Campus, the big 513,000 square foot building. What we're doing is taking down the existing cooling towers and putting in new cooling towers. The new towers are going back in a ground level. The existing towers are up on the roof, which makes it much more difficult to access for maintenance purposes. We are projected to bid this project on March 2nd. With construction starting, if approved by the board, second quarter and completing the third quarter. And again, this will also be funded by Sheldon State Local Funds. Go to the next slide, please. Thanks, please. And one more. So with a construction cost of $1 million, we're looking at a total project cost adding in the contingency of around 1.15 million. And I'll be happy to answer any questions the board might have about these or other projects.
All good information, Mr. Watley, thank you. And I just kind of revisit some of the other previously mentioned projects during this work session in general terms. Just, we would just really appreciate good communication with the board in a timely manner. And that, that just helps so much. And we appreciate what you do and Nathan as well. Anything else for the work session? Anything else from board members? Chancellor, you have anything to add?
No, I'm fine.
If not.
Do we not have the self-evaluation piece?
I've got an old one and it's on there. It's not on there, my mistake. Roger, are you with us? Yes, I see you're muted, but Roger Bates, Mr. Bates.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, so thank you for everyone for looking at that. I got some comments back from Milton and from Crystal to help with the edit of that document and circulated, I think, yesterday or day before yesterday, my days run together now. But within the last couple of days, a final version for that document. So it'd be helpful if you all could address that on the March meeting. We have two colleges that have contacted us who are doing their SAC submission and will need that document as a part of their packet. Obviously, I need to commend Glenda Colgaros, who was very, very helpful to me in that process. As you know, Glenda has spent a great deal of time on SACs issues over the years and was very helpful in helping to review all your board minutes. I do apologize for the length of that document. But as you know, we were teed up to address this last spring at the very board meetings. The first one, it got canceled actually due to COVID. So that is a two-year evaluation report as opposed to a one-year report. So it has a lot more pages to document all those actions. But it was intended to capture those things that are important for this self-evaluation over a two-year period. And we'll try not to have that again so you don't have quite such a long document to deal with. But if no one has any questions about the items at this point, Mr. Chairman, I would just simply ask that y'all consider putting it on your March agenda.
Roger, thank you for your work and for that of Dr. Colgaros and anyone else, Susan Price, anyone else that has participated in this. Forgive me for leaving anybody out. I'm really good at that. But, and anyone else to speak on the self-evaluation? Very good work. Thank you. Quite extensive. Have I missed anything else? I'm good at that. I need, I need everybody's help. Okay, seeing nothing, we will, we will stand adjourned. But board members, staff, thank you to the staff, technical staff, legal department, everyone that helps bring these meetings together. And board members, thank you for your participation. I know, I know for a fact that we've got board members sitting here right now and they've got some significant business going on elsewhere that they need to be tending to. And I, that's not to complain. I'm not in that situation, but I know for a fact some board members are having that situation. Thank you for giving me your time and doing it so unselfishly. If there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned.
Thank you. Take care of one. Good evening.